Row call.
Mayor Roland Dykes. Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Honor Woman Luanna Hoddinger.
Here.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Stinson.
Here.
Thank you. Item three, approval of the minutes from the meeting August the 8th, 2023. Do you have a motion to approve those as written?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I don't know of any proclamations for item four. Anybody? Communication from City Administrator James Finch.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. One thing I want to make public and make y'all aware of is that the transfer station that we built back some 12 years ago, maybe 13, we have now paid that off. We had two loans on that, and both of those have now been paid off. We paid them off early, and we estimate that it saved us about $179,000 in interest by paying that off early. Well, actually, that was for one of them, and then $93,000 for the other. So, actually, about $260,000 all told by paying them off early. When we first took over here, the debt ratio was 57.5%. Now, it's estimated, it's recommended that, like by the Comptroller's Office, that your debt ratio never exceed 30%, but ours was almost double that at that time, in 2013. And now it's 13.25%. So, our loan situation, our debt situation, has improved greatly in the last 10 years. So, we have paid those two loans off, and we have reduced that debt ratio, and we have saved a considerable amount of taxpayer money by paying those loans off early. And we just wanted to crow that a little bit and make y'all aware of it. The other thing I want to do, and I know some of you all have kind of expressed the same sentiments to me privately, is I want to really brag on our fire department. They were put in a very tough situation a few weeks back when we had a local business to catch fire, the recycling center out at the old Detroit Gasket Building, which y'all are well aware of. But they were there literally for days fighting that blaze. And we had a lot of help from surrounding fire departments. We couldn't have got it done without help. The chief gave me a report on how many different departments responded, how many trucks were there, how many people were there, and it was just amazing at the turnout, the support that we got to help us fight that blaze. And we had a blaze of that magnitude next to the gas company. It's a very scary proposition. And they saved part of the building, they kept the gas company safe. And one thing that wasn't well-publicized is there was a major electrical trunk line that came through behind there, of which if it would have got, the fire had gotten into it, it would shut out the whole back west end of town's electricity for no telling how long before they could have got that back up and running. So, I commend our guys, from the chief on down to everybody. Everybody that I've talked to that was there has bragged and raved about how well-organized they were and what a good job they did and how they were making all the right moves at all the right time. And I'm just really proud of them, and I can't say enough about the job they did. And again, I just want to crow a little bit because I just feel like they showed what a good department, no matter how small you are, what a good department can accomplish. And I know you guys are proud of them too, you've told me, but I just wanted to get that out there because it's rare. We're lucky we live in a place that we do where we don't normally have fires of that magnitude, but they weren't overwhelmed, they weren't panicky, they just went in businesslike and did what they needed to do. And I just can't say enough how proud I am of them.
Well-trained and planning.
Yes, absolutely. The other thing that I have, and I'm going to call on Gary to actually get up and talk about it. Old Smoky, y'all know that a while back, Old Smoky approached us about wanting to relocate a street down in the industrial park. And we were good with it and told them to go ahead, but now they're wanting a more definite agreement in place, and I've talked to Terry about it a little bit, and I'm not sure there's much more we can do under the current circumstance, but Gary's going to share with you the details of it.
They approached a planning commission with their site plan, which the site plan's approved. It's a road that runs parallel to Oliver Cromwell on the other side of, right now Oliver Cromwell runs right between two buildings that they own. The new street would be on the outside of that, more toward the west, it'd be west, so further away from Coke Boulevard. And then what they want to do is for us to accept that, what would the new street, and I would imagine we would rename it because Oliver Cromwell was for the business not even here anymore, but they want us to accept that as a city street and then abandon the right-of-way of Oliver Cromwell as it exists so that they can do security for their food-grade production, what they're doing down there, because they need to fence it in and do things like that in order for, their guidelines they have to go by, it's out of my wheelhouse, so I'm not real, I can't intelligently talk about it. And we told them that as long as they build the road and meets our specs, that yeah, we would accept it in. It's not been voted on, that's not a definitive thing, but it's the right thing to do, it's what we should do and would do, but I don't know if they were necessarily looking for a vote that will pinky promise them, I'm not sure Jeff's not here, so they didn't send anybody. But I guess I'll just ask you guys, like, nobody has an objection to that, right? If I go back tomorrow to communicate with them and tell them that we're pretty much on board with accepting that street. It's a one-to-one, it's the same square footage, we're not taking on more road that we'd have to pave in the future, it's not, I mean, it's a zero, yeah, it's zero-sum equivalent to what we've got now.
It serves the same purpose, it just is on the opposite side of the buildings, because all it does is access the buildings in the rear, and it will still do that, it'll just be on the opposite side. And it allows them to close that up and fence it all in, so it'll all be fenced in, instead of having two fenced-in areas, they can have just one big fenced-in area because that street will be gone. And so, it actually works better for us because we will be accepting in a newly-built street that won't need any maintenance for many years, whereas the street that's in there is old and worn and will need to be repaved much sooner than the new street will be. So, it's actually a better deal for us in the long run. But they want us, they kind of want us to accept it now, but we can't accept, I don't see, and Terry and I talked about that, I don't, how do you accept a street that don't exist yet? You know, we can kind of support it in theory, but we can't make a commitment on something that's not there, we can't say, yeah, we'll accept it in. If we did that, in theory, they could go back and build anything, because there wouldn't be anything there to inspect to make sure that it meets all the criteria that it would need to meet to be accepted into the city streets system. So, I don't, I don't, Terry's in agreement, because like I said, we talked about it, but I could never recommend that we sign off on a street that don't exist, because if it come back to bite us down the road, it'd be our own fault for setting ourselves up to accept, we've accepted a street that don't exist, and who knows what that you might get, but you'd like to think they won't short-change you, but you never say never.
And that's absolutely correct. Procedure would be for them to build the road, then to go out and inspect it. If he comes back and says it's good, we can vote and take it into the city.
And I told Gary that, you know, when he and I discussed it, when he brought it to me, that I did feel, the only thing I felt like we could do would be to, would be to be, just agree to it in principle, that yeah, if it meets all the criteria, we will take it in, but we can't take it in. You know, we can just say, yeah, if it meets the criteria, we will take it in, but I think that's as strong as we can go. And I would, I don't have a problem with that, I think there's nothing, unless Terry would, but, you know.
Is this going to be the extension of Main Street to Coke Boulevard?
No, this is a totally separate issue. This is at the other end, it's down there next to the sewage treatment plant.
Okay.
It's just moving a street over from one side of a building to another.
Okay.
It's back in the back. When you cut off right there before you get to the sewage treatment plant, you go back and instead of turning left where it is now, you'd go a little farther and then turn left.
Yeah, no vote needed, no action item, but if anybody's got a problem with that, definitely tell me now so I can.
Gary, I got a recommendation. Please, try, does the procedure really, or if contract perspective, well, we typically do, just wish my best on the bill, so if it's a engine on the road being the certain criteria expected, then we will adopt it and actually we will.
Is that something an attorney like Jeff Green could draw up and give to me? Okay, let's work for me. All right, we'll do that. I'll run it by, through planning commission first, I'll have him get it done before then, and then run it through PC, Steve and those guys, and then I guess have it for October. I feel like they would have, it's a good faith exercise between an industry and your municipality, so I don't think anybody's.
The developer is supposed to be, so it's got, if it meets our inspection level expectations for the road, and then it's mayor's, but if it don't, we're not going to re-impact any.
Good. All right, thank you.
That's all I got, sir.
I don't think there's any appointment to boards or committees, any reports from committees, members of council or other officers. Okay, item eight, old business. Consideration of second reading of ordinance 2023-12, creating a museum and history board.
And Assistant Mayor, that's ordinance number 2023-12, an ordinance to amend the City of Newport Municipal Code, an ordinance to amend the Municipal Code of the City of Newport Title II, boards and commission, et cetera, adding chapter two, museum and history board.
What's your pleasure, Council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to second. Any discussion? What is that, only for Row Call on that, or would you?
Usually we do on ordinance.
Okay, okay. Row Call, please. Tina.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Hoddinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Yeah, you go.
Item nine, new business. Item A, consideration of first reading of ordinance 2023-13, budget amendment for the City of Newport.
And that's ordinance 2023-13, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2023-2024.
Do we have a motion for the first reading? Second, anybody?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Row Call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Hoddinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes. Item B, consideration of first reading of ordinance 2023-14, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And that's ordinance number 2023-14, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2023-2024 for Newport Grammar School.
Do we have a motion for first reading?
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Row Call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Hoddinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes. Item C, consideration of resolution 2023-05, closing and quitclaim the public right-of-way of Birch and Cody Street.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I spoke about this last month, and I've got the map right here if anybody wants to look at it, that shows how it is now, what the finished product would look like. This is where we purchased the property over on Birch Street in front of the Woodland Park, and it just closes off those streets, and Gary can go into better detail on it.
Yeah, we got the survey done to close the unimproved right-of-way, so we're not closing streets or anything like that, it's just, it's a grid pattern, so it just closes that in, and then we're basically closing that and then quitclaiming it to ourselves, so it's just one solid piece of property. But like I said, it's all unimproved, there are no roads, it's just there on the map, and then it just won't exist on the map, that's about the only difference. And it went through the planning commission favorably, yeah.
The planning commission has approved it and sent it on to you guys, and it increases the size of the property from about 1.4 acres to 2.3, roughly, by consolidating it all into one piece.
Any questions or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, consideration of routes of the River Festival.
This came up, well, it didn't come up, it was the public comments section last month, you've got the information in front of you, they're here if you've got any questions for them, but we parsed through a lot of it last month, if anything's new, then feel free to direct them, because I don't know anything more than you guys did last month. Only that I've had a couple people already talk about it and talk about how excited they are for it to happen, if it can happen.
One of the things we had hoped when we first began the Riverwalk many years ago was the potential for these type of events. And so, even though we haven't reached our goal of the extension and the length and the breadth of the Riverwalk, you know, starting with the concerts on the river that the Chamber started seven years ago, they've grown in popularity each season, even though they had a minor setback during COVID, they still went on and were still well-attended, and they're back, this past summer, they were back to their pre-COVID attendance numbers, been very pleased with those. And I think this is just the next logical step for those types of events on the river. And we're pretty excited about the potential to have an arts festival back along the river, and like to see it go and grow, and hopefully it will help to also push along the growth of the Riverwalk.
You want Council to vote on this plan, is that what?
Yes, they're wanting to know because it's a long-term planning deal, you know, it takes a while to put these kind of things together, and they're wanting to know if they can go ahead and get approval for it. Of course, again, it would be kind of like we were talking earlier, contingent upon all the requirements for the proper insurance and those kinds of things that be provided that are required, all those would still have to be met. But this gives tentative approval, so they can go ahead and move forward with the process.
Yeah, because they'll use the back lawn space, the Riverwalk, they'll be using public space, and as long as they check the other boxes for our event, our event requirements, then we'd allow it, if approved.
But just like, oh, sorry, because I had a problem though, you know, just like with the concerts, you know, the Chamber comes every year in the spring and gets the concerts approved, and so they've been doing it for seven years, and it's just a simple process for them now. This is a new event, it's a little more complex, this is more between what we've been doing with the concerts and what the Chamber does with the street fest. This is kind of a hybrid in-between, smaller version to begin with, and hopefully, like I say, it'll prosper and grow. But, so, being the first one, it's going to require more time and effort to get that first one put together, and then hopefully, if it becomes an annual event, it's much easier to do the second one than it is to do the first one. So, that's why they're, I mean, I feel like they're going about it the right way, getting a good head start, to have plenty of time to try to get everything in place, instead of waiting until late in the game and then trying to throw something together. So, I'm impressed with the way they're going about it as far as doing their preliminary work, getting it started early. To me, it bodes well for the possibility and probability of success for the event.
Like I said, a lot of people come to me with their ideas about what should go on down here, and no one has a plan. They have a plan, that's better than I usually get.
Yeah, they came in last month with a plan, and that impressed me because, as Gary says, most people don't have a plan, they have ideas, but they don't have any plans.
They tell me all about their idea, then expect me to do it.
Come up with a plan.
Yeah, yeah.
We certainly appreciate your plan.
It's obvious, it's obvious, you've put a lot of work into it, we appreciate that.
We just want to make this community as attractive as we can, not just the people that are here so we don't lose them. And for the outside, it's probably real nice, but there's not a lot of mystical stuff going on right here. You've got to have a grable, you've got to have an ash bowl, you've got to have a gomps bowl, you have this horse down, really not, it's not that much of a.
You're plowing new ground, so you're kind of setting your own measuring stick, so.
I know. We're a lot prettier in Newport than, I mean, this river is such an asset.
It is, it really is.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know that this is two years before the plan was actualized. We worked with the Tennessee Arts Commission and with Air Collaborative to come up with this plan. There's a core group of citizens that have already put in months of work, so we're really excited and we really hope you'll approve it.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve this event.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. Hear none.
Thank you.
I wish Tim was here, because my wife and I went down to the Riverwalk a couple weekends back and watched the parks float, and it's a nice thing that we have, and if you haven't been down there, I'd recommend, how would you go?
Okay, item 10, bids. A is consideration of bids for a pickup truck for the street department.
Yes, the street department would like to ask the board to approve the purchase of a new 2023 Dodge, 1500 4x4 Tradesman, and the cost of this is $45,708. And we do have this in the budget for it, and.
We took the relic off the road to replace.
We're trying to replace the 1991 Dodge pickup, which is 32-year-old, and it's hard to get parts for.
Yeah, we've already parked it.
What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion second, any other questions? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Item B is consideration of bids for decking around the pool at the community center.
Tim and Virginia and crew are off on the PRPA this week, so they were unfortunately unable to attend, but this is an item that they bid out. The total cost came to $30,650. It is for resurfacing the decking around the interior pool at the community center, and it is from Team Red Coatings, and this was the only bid submitted, and it is an item that is budgeted. And I know they do respectfully request, if you would, to please approve this so they can get that fixed, to where it'd be a little easier and nicer for the people coming in.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion second, any questions or discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Item C, consideration of bids for heating in our computer system for parks and rec.
This is, okay, the community center has a very humongous unit that they use to fuel the building, and they had numerous problems with it. This is the one that keeps blowing all the compressors that we have to keep replacing, and there's a computer system that monitors and allows them to adjust the temperature controls. This is a holdover from Johnson Controls. It has never worked very well, and it's caused them a lot of problems, so this computer system will replace that, and it works with the Trane unit. And they would like to request, if they could, to replace that unit. There was one bid, it came in from Trane, and the total cost will be $33,145. And they do request, if the Council would, to please approve this bid.
Do we have a motion?
Well, just to give you a little histrionics too, to go along with what Tina said, excuse me, before we put this, the Johnson Control System in, what, 11 years ago now, 10, 11 years ago, we've never had a problem with surges, what appears to be surges at the community center. And for the last, I've lost count of how many compressors and other things we've had to replace up there. We've done all kinds, every kind of research on it you can do, we've talked to TBA, we have talked to NU, trying to figure out what was causing this. They would argue there'd been no surges in the line, there'd been no thunderstorms in the area when these were occurring, the insurance wouldn't cover any of them, we were having to eat these things, every time you turned around, we're having to eat 60 grand, and I mean, at some point, you got to put a stop to it. And so, what we have come up with, in talking with the so-called experts, is that, and Tim can explain it much better than I can, I wish he was here so he could really give you better detail on it, but it's, and I think, is it three-phase, is that what it's called? There are three-phase units, and I'm not an electrician, so I can't tell you much about what that means, other than it pulls a lot of load. And if it goes below, it pull, if the electrical current that is coming in drops below a certain load, it blows that compressor. And this computer is supposed to fix that, is supposed to stop that from happening. And we looked at trying to put surge protectors on it, because we thought it was surge, that's why we kept following that, that's the only thing that made any sense. But the conclusion we come to is it wasn't so much a surge as a drag, it was going below what it required. It wasn't that it was so much going in, it blowed it out, it wasn't getting enough to operate, and that was causing it to have the same, basically, as I understand it, the same effect that a surge was having, but it was actually the opposite thing. And so, that's why there was never any record on the line of any surges, and there wasn't, you know, when there wasn't storms in the area, it was because the input wasn't strong enough, for whatever reason, the voltage or amperage or whatever degree that's measured in, dropped below what that three-phase unit needed to operate. And so, this is supposed to address that. And so, if it will work, it'll going to save us a lot of money, because we have spent a lot of money the last several years replacing these things. And I mean, it's every time you turn around, one's blowed, two's blowed, and there's like 30 grand a pop, and so, that's a backbreaker. But Tim and his. But Tim and his staff has, I mean, I couldn't begin to tell you how many hours and days of, of time and work and effort they put into this trying to come up with a solution to, one, figure out what's happening, and then, two, to figure out how to fix it. And this is finally where we've ended up.
Did we get a motion on that?
No, I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
Don't mess with my mind.
Got to keep, you don't get, you don't, you don't get to stick much, we got to throw you a curveball.
Yeah, that's right, you did.
Second.
Motion?
Do we have a motion?
Second. Did you get that, Tina? Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. One quick question, James, somebody in here can answer. Who is responsible for blown streetlights that's on our streets?
NU.
They, do they have somebody in charge of riding around and looking and seeing what's out?
They do.
They're very mad at it.
Well, we need to quit paying the electric bill.
We need to quit paying, we need to quit paying the maintenance bill, that's what we need to quit paying.
Yeah, I mean, I drove from my house to the city park one night, early in the morning, and I bet I counted eight lights out.
There was, there was like a dozen out on the Cosby Road back in the spring, and we finally got those fixed. But we, there was the whole stretch up by the post office, all the way up to the red light was out, every one of them down through there.
Can you send them word that the council, is everybody on board? They need to get the lights out. We're paying electricity for that bulb to burn, and there's dark spots at people's houses.
We, I get complaints, and I pass, I pass it on to NU. But what they do is, they, they don't have a crew, that that's just what they do. They have a maintenance crew, and I don't know, they may have more than one, but they pick a day, whenever they take a notion, they pick a day to go do bulb replacement, and that's what they do that day. But they don't do it every day, they don't do it every week, and I'm skeptical that they do it every month, because I've had some that's been on the list for months trying to get them replaced. And so they, as Gary said, you know, they got a crew that does it, but they ain't very good at it, brother, because they just do it when they take a notion. There's no, there's no schedule to it.
Well, see if you can amp them up a little bit.
We can do that.
Comments from citizens? See you now. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So would.
Second.
Second. So let it sit down.